Good morning, welcome to our last meeting before Christmas. Wednesday, December 20th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
I share Weimeyer.
All right, please rise and stand me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the planet, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, in the gospel of liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this day you've given to us, this season where we're reminded of the birth of your son who became our Savior, Lord, and pray that as we enter into that season, we might slow down for just a moment amongst our busyness and to recognize that you are King Jesus and that you rule over all. Pray over these who are the government in our local zone, Lord, and pray that you would bless them, give them wisdom, keep them, and help us to make decisions that benefit not only all but also lead toward your kingdom. We love you and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Do we have any correspondence or organizational business?
I don't believe so.
All right. Any public comment?
No.
All right. Our consent agenda today, we have two items, the minutes from the meeting on December 13th and tax change orders in the amount of minus $193.88.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. Our first item of business is to discuss and consider for approval the IT department's write-offs in the amount of $85.53. Dustin. All right. Oh, it's you. Are you doing that today? Okay.
Yep, I told Dustin I would take care of this.
No problem.
This, we don't typically do these, but upon the advice of our auditor, we're going to ask the board to write this off. This is kind of a one-off oddity, has to do with community corrections, believing they double-paid a copier invoice, so then they adjusted their budget in another area, but it left our books $85 short. We just need you all to write that amount off. Very simple deal, so.
All right. Shouldn't be much of a problem, so affirmative motion would be I make a motion to approve the IT department removing debt accounts in the amount of $85.53.
To move.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. Second item of business is to discuss and consider for approval a TGT sponsorship request from the Ottawa Main Street Association for 1,633 to help fund a website upgrade. And Christina Clare is going to help us on this one.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just bringing this before you today to discuss and consider a sponsorship request from Main Street Association for help to fund their website upgrade. I have Sarah Stoffer here today to kind of let you guys know a little bit more about what their plans are.
Cool.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. As you guys know, the Main Street, we've really been rebuilding it. A lot of what we've been doing over the last year, year and a half, has been a lot of behind-the-scenes work. We've made a lot of ground, but we're at the point now where we really need to make some changes, and a website is one of those, to get people to see what we're doing as well as pushing those activities that we have on our horizon that we'd like to do, so people even outside of our community can see it and come to them. But the biggest thing, and whenever I talked with Derek and Christine this last week, was really wanting to form this partnership and working together as community events and things like that, but not only for the community of Ottawa, but also a lot of the ideas we have would be bringing people in from other communities for like day trips and things like that. So to organize that kind of stuff, we really need to have a functioning website. Currently, our website is not functioning at all. It's actually very sad. We would like to have more on there, but we currently put things on there, we go back and look at it, and it's not there. So we're really not being able to utilize it. So that's the request for today.
We, Christina and I sat down last week with Main Street and had this discussion, certainly an appropriate use of TGT dollars. They do have a vision to bring folks in. I believe this is a step in that vision. We've discussed, you know, the county doesn't do well, in my opinion, funding like ongoing maintenance-type requests, but this is a one-off expense to help them upgrade their website. So I would recommend this. I agree with Sarah. I think it's a partnership that we should try and cultivate for the better of the community. So happy to answer any questions as well, but she did a good job laying it out.
So when you put events on there, you aren't just putting your events on there, you're hoping she put events covering the entire county. It's kind of a, something that we've kind of dropped the ball on again, too, so.
So, and it's something that, again, and actually I've talked with multiple organizations, and when I came forward, one of the biggest things was I wanted to form those partnerships. We're all working together for the bigger picture. But there's really no, I mean, there's a bunch of calendars out there, but they're not all uniform. Like, it might just have Ottawa stuff on it, but doesn't mean that if you're not in Ottawa, you couldn't put on. The biggest thing that was selling point on this website for us is that it has a calendar that anybody has access free to put on there. So you can have, you can put it all on the same calendar, or you can break it down into sports, youth, church. We would design how we want it broke down. The library can put things on there. Wellzville can put their community events on there. That's the, was the selling point for us, is that it has a community calendar that everybody could have access to.
Right.
Sounds like it's going to good use. Only question I have is the odd number request. Sixteen hundred and thirty-three.
So that was the actual number of paying for the website, and the reason why it's an odd number is because I actually got a, I won a credit to go towards part of it. And so once you took that credit off, it made it an odd number. I don't.
Yeah. Because she's actually already talked to somebody who knows how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, that's the actual bill. Like, we, yeah, that's the actual bill of what it's going to cost. Sorry.
I think it's a good use of the guest tax.
You want to chime in?
I'll make the most of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
One thing, I'd only one thing to suggest, I know you're pretty new on the Main Street there, that the Main Street needs to make better contact with two of the organizations that promote the biggest money, the doctor show and the car show.
Scheduled to be talking to them soon. We have some things in the works with the community.
I know, I know. The Chambers did a real good job, and the Car Club, I know, is going to start having their meetings at the Chamber office.
Yep. I'm also housed in the Chamber as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
All right. The third item of business, to review and discuss the CEMS Medical First Responder Credentialing Manual. EMS chief.
So I know that you are all aware that we've been working with our partners, with our medical first responders, to help let them work up to their full scope of practice. It's something that, for my whole career, has been a goal of the organization. We've had some challenges with that, in the fact that the Board of EMS has oversight for agencies, but they don't oversee people. So it's kind of left our medical first responders in what you could say limbo. Luckily for us, our division chief, Jason Hudson, did a lot of research and was able to find out that Sedgwick County has a plan in place to do just that. He was able to contact Sedgwick County and get us a copy of what they do, which we were able to modify for our use. Our assistant chief, Louise Bardwell, she oversees all of the education and credentialing standards, so she had input on this, too, to make sure that we were maintaining the correct, highest educational standards for our first responders. That way, it can help prepare them with those changes and just those dynamic challenges that they see in the field. And then our fire chiefs came together and formed a committee of three people. We had, or have, Richmond Township Fire Chief Jeremy Skeens, Franklin Township Assistant Fire Chief Troy Calderwood, and Williamsburg Township Assistant Chief JR Harris. They were elected by their peers to work with us, to come up with a manual that's something that would work for everybody. So I just wanted to present this to you today. Derek has already seen the manual and approved it. It is quite lengthy, but what it is, is it's making sure that they understand our medical protocols, that they understand, or we have an understanding, that they can do the skillset and a way to monitor that on a two-year cycle. So this will allow them, in conjunction with Franklin County EMS, to work up with full scope of practice. And our medical director is fully on board with this as well, too. I think it'll be great for the community to have extra hands when needed.
Cool.
So if anyone has any questions, I am more than happy to answer those.
I was just going to say that it is available online. If anybody wants to look, it's a part of our agenda for today, but if you want to hold yours up there, Mr. Roy, it is a thick document.
Yeah.
So it's not just a couple of, you know, a couple of pages. There's a lot to it, so.
Hundred and one pages.
Yeah. Good job.
I would take a second and applaud both Christie and Louise and their staff for all the effort that they put into this. This, yeah, this was ambitious, and I'm very pleased with them. The document itself is fantastic. I won't pretend to understand all of the procedures contained therein, but it's slick, and it's easy to, outside of the medical part, it's easy to see what they're doing here. I'm really happy with them. This will make the community better. It'll make the community safer. So thank you, Christie. Thank you, Louise, for all your work on this.
Well, we're going to roll this out January 1st, so that any of our medical first responders that want to participate in the program will be able to do so.
Are these the gentlemen that were?
Jeremy is here.
Okay.
He's the gentleman in the white shirt.
All right, all right.
The other two unfortunately had conflicts. JR and Mr. Calderwood both had some conflicts.
Awesome. I didn't know if you had any comments that you wanted to make about how, because you're the other side of it, right?
Well, I was part of the committee, and I would, again, applaud Christie and Jason and Louise on everything that they did. They went above and beyond in a super timely fashion. I didn't expect it to be done in a year and a half.
Awesome. All right.
Major thanks to them for the communication.
All right, cool.
Okay.
All right, we don't have any, we don't have any action to take with it, so.
Right. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just, the importance of expanding, especially being more of rural county, to where those guys and ladies are really important, and it showed, we had a deal up at Wellzville the other day at the wrestling matches up there, and I think our ambulance was out on the call, and so who was there first? First responders were there first. So we had to depend on them for 20, 30 minutes until the ambulance could get there from somewhere else. It was an odd, that's what could happen in an odd situation, you know?
Right.
Normally, they'd be there in five minutes, but being they was out on a call, they'd wait 30 minutes, you know? And that kid was laid there motionless for 30 minutes, so it was more than just a small deal. And the first responders were there, the very first people there, so.
And they need that extra training.
How's the Wellzville station coming along?
I'm glad you ask. We're hoping that the drywall is going in this week. I know there was a little bit of a delay getting some gas line in, but that's now done, and the outside of it is stucked, so next step is drywall and hopefully in soon.
Yeah, cool, awesome. All right. Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our fourth item of business, consider appointing Jerry Dieters to fill a vacancy on the Ohio Township Board, Janet Paddock, our county clerk.
Yes, so there's been a vacancy on this board for a while, and they've been actively seeking someone in the area to fill the vacancy. It doesn't have a lot of duties of this position, but is something statutorily that needs to be filled. So Jerry Dieters has submitted a letter of interest for this position, and he would like to be appointed to fill the remaining term, so, and then he would be on the ballot when that seat comes up again.
All right. Good, Chair. We don't have any discussion. Affirmative motion would be I make a motion to appoint Jerry Dieters to fill the vacancy as clerk of the Ohio Township Board.
To move. Thank you.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. That concludes our business. Just as a reminder, we will not have a study session next Monday on Christmas. And I will start with Derek.
Yeah, just seeing that this is the last time we'll meet before Christmas, want to say a few words about the folks that are going to have to work on Christmas Eve and Christmas, our first responders, our 24-hour employees. That's not an easy thing to do, and certainly we'll be thinking about them, and we're lucky to have folks that are willing to do that. That's, you know, those jobs are hard enough anyway, our paramedics, our law enforcement personnel, our corrections officers. If I'm missing others, then that's escaping my mind, but to have that job anyway and have to deal with that, and on top of it, be away from your loved ones this time of year, that's hard. And so certainly appreciate them, we'll be thinking about them, hope the five of you appreciate them as well, and I'm confident that you do. Wish you all a Merry Christmas, wish our county employees a Merry Christmas. I hope it's a good, positive time of year for everyone. That's all I have. Thanks, Ryan.
All right. Well, all right. Sheriff's Department have anything? If you haven't had a chance, and you're on Facebook, go onto the Sheriff's Department page, there's a cute, they actually arrested the Grinch, and so there's some pictures, some pictures of him in jail, and it's very, very cute, so. All right. Anybody else that way? Are you, have we got all your updates? So we'll move on to David Lee.
I wanted to talk to you a little bit about some different ideas for our chip seal project this year. We are scheduled, based on our rotation, to have about 47 miles that we would ordinarily chip seal this time around. I'd like to reduce that down to about 28 miles, and I'll explain why. Included in this year's chip seal project is Old 50. We are obviously moving forward with a widening project on four miles of that. The remaining 12 miles, we have looked at it and really don't think that chip seal is going to do much to enhance that surface. And so we would like to eliminate that from the chip seal project this year. And then there's about three, just over three miles of subdivision roads that are scheduled this year as well. Some of those subdivisions we have overlaid in the last couple of years, so there's really not anything to do there. Some of the other subdivisions, we've done some heavy patching, and so they are in pretty good shape. And I would like, you know, maybe at some other point, a little bit later, to bring some options to take care of those subdivisions, but if we eliminate those roads from the chip seal, that would bring us down to about 28 miles of chip seal that we would do. Now, and that would result in some cost savings. I would like to think about using some of that cost savings to put back into Old 50, the section of road that we're not rebuilding right away. One of the thoughts is, well, the thought is to go through there and in certain areas, do a asphalt leveling course over that pavement that's there. That would result in a, you know, temporarily anyway, in a smoother driving surface, better experience for those utilizing that road. We wouldn't be able to do, I don't think that we would be able to do a leveling course on all 12 miles of it, but certainly I think there would be enough savings there to do, you know, at least a few miles of the worst sections of that. If we piggyback that on next year's chip seal project, which in 2019, we chip sealed about 25 miles, and we would still do that same 25 miles, but again, that cost savings, we could turn right around and put back into doing additional leveling courses on Old 50. So kind of a two-year program to put some new asphalt on as much of that as we can. It would buy us a little bit of time, it would show the public, those that utilize that road, that, you know, that we're, we're not doing, you know, we're not just letting it sit idly by, that we're trying to be proactive to at least come up with a temporary solution that will help that driving experience. You know, obviously, it's not going to make it wider, we're still going to have trouble with the edges breaking off, but by and large, if we do these leveling courses, it will add a little more asphalt and cover up some of the roughest areas, make that a little better situation. And so if you're okay with that, I'll get some rough numbers on what we could do, and we'll take a look at the, excuse me, at the sections of road. I would anticipate waiting until after we bid the Old 50 project. I think there might be some cost savings associated with, you know, the contractor that's already going to be on site, mobilized, doing asphalt work. I think we might be able to get maybe a little slightly better prices with having somebody right there. So it could be something that, you know, we go to bid right after we award the contract or after we open the bids for Old 50. Again, to get a little more bang for our buck. Something else that I've looked into is, you know, last year, we switched to the limestone chips instead of using the haydite chips because it was $200,000 less to use the limestone. I think we're going to be in the same ballpark again this year. I have checked with a couple of local quarries that could, one of them produced the limestone chips that we used this year. I checked, and so we have two quarries that have wash plants that are, have the ability to produce that, those quarter-inch chips, and also wash them so that they are clean when they're, when we put them down. I think we can save some money, $20,000, $25,000, if we were to purchase the chips ourselves, so that will be an option that we'll be able to look at. Also, to, again, just trying to use, make best use of our taxpayer dollars. If we're going to switch to limestone chips, we might as well purchase those ourselves to save, save whatever money that we can.
The ones that they used last year weren't washed, were they?
Yeah, they were.
Or were they washed?
Yeah, it's still.
There was, it's still going to be.
No matter how much we wash them, they're still going to be dust whenever they're applied because they are limestone chips. That's the nature of that. But definitely, whenever they're, they're much cleaner, whenever we do wash them, it helps to adhere to the emulsion that is put down and those sorts of things. So I think it's a, it's a good deal. You know, last year, for instance, you know, the difference between the haydite and the limestone bid was about $32,000 a mile for the haydite, about 27 for the limestone. And so if we can purchase the chips and cut that down to, you know, a 28-mile project, I think we should have a couple hundred thousand dollars at least that we can put towards the leveling course. So I think it might be a win-win for everybody to buy us a little bit more time to save money for a larger project on Old 50, to continue the widening, which we need to do.
So getting back to the leveling course, to be clear, we're not asking for formal action on anything today, but are you okay with David looking into numbers, getting numbers for what that may look like, so we can bring it back to you? Are you okay with not chip sealing those other parts of 50? Because that's what we would be looking at and bringing back for your consideration.
I like the fact that, just because, this section we usually do, but I like the fact that you actually go look at them and go, is really that what needs to be done? Or does it really need to be done at all, so that we aren't just doing it because we've always done it? But it is something we can't do, it is something we'd have to, the leveling.
Say that again.
We cannot do leveling in house. It would have to be.
No, ma'am, we don't have the equipment to do that.
I would be fine with, yeah, looking at other options, whatever makes it better.
Yeah.
50 damn sure needs help down through there.
Yes.
Some of the chip and seal, basically waste your money if you do put that on there, I agree. So whatever amount we can get done is going to help the people. I mean, it's pretty bad. My boy took a trip down 50 with his doctor, and when he got back home, he said, Dad, I need to talk to my commissioner. Anyway.
So you think the leveling course, Rod, would be inappropriate?
Yeah. I mean, granted, one step more would be to mill it, but you're not going to get near the amount covered. Leveling course is going to help keep the structure, I think, in your road, because right now, you're starting, it's starting to open up in a lot of places, getting moisture down. And the leveling course will keep it from deteriorating as fast as it is now.
You know, all we're trying to do is build a bridge between now and when we're able to fully finish it.
And I think you're headed the right direction.
Cool. Awesome.
Okay. All right, that's what I'll do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I know that you think the roads are pretty good, but how's the striping on those roads? I mean, that, I hadn't got any complaints on the road itself. I had my complaint that I've gotten has been on the striping that's deteriorated over time, you know? And I know a few years ago, we had a problem with it anyhow. I don't know if this is a section that we had that problem with. I know we've upgraded, and I didn't know if this other part, while we got somebody there striping, the other part would be, would be paid for us to, maybe we could even get the other a little cheaper with a few more miles and redo the, just do redo the striping.
Certainly, we can include that in our painting bid package.
If we're going to skip that, I mean, we should go ahead and still re-stripe.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that.
Awesome. All right. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right. So let's start with Commissioner comments. Got anything?
Yeah, most of you, I don't know if you got your letter yet, but from the South Lake Authority, where our coordinator put out a document and newsletter, and she's doing a very good job of all that, and keeping everybody up to date on what they, what we've been doing forward. And she listed out the waste tire grants, she's helped the entities collect $28,000. And you've got to remember on this, if you look down there and it says one county or one city gets four, it's because one county or one city made the initiative. She gives the offer to everybody, but I've even given the offer out to some people, they, she's never been approached. So you can tell the ones that have benefited from it, and like Lake Mary, the Senator over there, her recycling program, of course, they're an entity that's a pretty good size recycling deal, and she's got several, I mean, you've got to remember, she just helps them get the money. She doesn't actually, you know, we don't fund it. And so they asked for her expertise and our endorsement to be able to do that. And I know this year, she's helped the local entities get $28,000 in grants from the tire program, and then from the South Lake Grant Program, she's helped entities get $127,000 worth of projects. And a lot of the smaller ones that I've mentioned, the different chambers and towns and stuff, is recycled benches and tables and chairs and stuff that they can use in the picnic areas or the playground areas, or even on Main Street, you know, in areas. But all they got to do is contact her. David is chairman, I don't know on the grants, they have the grant program, but he's had the whole deal. If you just contact us, and we'll get you in touch with her, and she could put you on the right direction on the, to getting some of that money. I know Ottawa's receiving. I know Ottawa received several of them. Went to the little terrorism deal we had the other day, Christine put on for the people out there, and very nice for that to recognize them. And I, I mentioned it to Amy the other day. I think it's important that we recognize that our boards with no plan, they just burn out of their own bread, and we really need to deal with that, recognizing. I know, you know, good job recognizing our paid employees, but we got to remember, I'm paid, and those employees that are representatives of the county, you know, we need to recognize them at certain times, too, which I think Christine does a good job with the terrorism part out there, so. That's all.
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I just might add, we were at Kansas Association of Counties Convention down in Wichita here a couple, a couple of weeks ago, and one of, a lot of the Western counties don't have any hospitals they can go to nearby, and, and all they rely on is their volunteer fire departments and first responders, so I really thank you guys for volunteering, for being part of that system, and that's all I have.
All right. The only thing I want to, this week, was the Ottawa Library announced their O-Town Reads for 2023, so if you want to be a part of a community all reading the same book, there are books available, you can go pick one up for free. Kind of an interesting book that they picked this year. They work really hard at trying to find something that kind of, it's a cost spectrum from young to old, and so give it, give it a shot. The other, only thing is that today is Pam Harris' last day at the Health Department. She's been our assistant director not very long, but she's made a huge impact in the time that she's been there. This is her last day, so she will be missed, and I think maybe if that's all, then, all right.
Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.